We're getting it up on the screen. We've been approached by the owners of the Burger Bar that they would like to consider purchasing the seven public parking spaces very close to them, right on West Virginia, near the CenturyLink and the Time Insurance parking lot. A lot of people don't even know, or may not be aware, that we have seven public parking spaces there. They're used not only for patrons of, let's say, the Burger Bar, but they're also used by anybody in that area. There's Sandra's Restaurant near there. When Spazi was there, a lot of people parked there for Spazi when they were in Sandra's So when they discussed with us purchasing it, they said, I don't know if they really should have told us this, but they said that their employees are parking there, nor to leave space by the new restaurant for their patrons. Well, that kind of raised an eyebrow or two because should we really have employees parking in public parking for a long period of time? We dealt with that on Sullivan and West Henry recently by putting in two-hour parking. And we don't have any limitations of parking here. So these spaces are used. And as a staff, you know, we said to the owners, you know, we emailed them and said we were going to bring it back to council. As a staff, we're not recommending going out and selling the seven public parking spaces, but if you want to, we will do that, put it out for an open bid. But if we want to retain it as public parking, we may also want to put limitations on how many hours one can park there now that we know that we have people parking there, it could be all day.
I mean, when I went over there, can you go to the photographs? The whole area just, it doesn't, like that, look at that. It just doesn't, even our bumpers there, our parking stops, it looks...
Oh, it's not the pleasant, most pleasant...
It's not a pleasant area. Now, we do have that sign there, which for me is misleading because it would seem like that whole area is public parking, but it's not. It's only those seven spaces. The Burger Bar does have dedicated parking.
They do.
They do. So, I mean, really, those restaurants and the other businesses there, I mean, really the one that you mentioned doesn't have any, do they have any dedicated parking? No.
No.
So I would tend to want to keep it open, but not have the people park there all day. We've gone, like you said, gone through this on Sullivan Street. I mean, maybe they could work out a deal with Wells Fargo. They have an awfully big parking lot over there that they could possibly lease some space from. I think it should be for the restaurant patrons.
I agree wholeheartedly. I like the idea of make maybe a two-hour limit. That's plenty of time for somebody to come in, have dinner. The restaurants, I think Carmel is kind of, it's not for this location, they have a similar problem because when you're coming down Olympia, yes, there's parking across the street in the parking garage, but it's not, the signage to use that from that, from that is not very evident. And this would be something that would be, I think, promote the business area in there. And my inclination would be to put a two-hour limit, keep it as public.
Nancy?
Yeah, I concur with what Gary just said, and that was my thinking all along. The only concern I have is, as we've had in previous discussions, even though we might designate something as a two-hour limit, we don't have any parking control...
Enforcement.
Enforcement. So I know in talking with some business owners, there are people that do park in the two-hour parking spaces all day. So that might not discourage some of the Burger Bar employees from using it anyway. But I think that from a city perspective, we're at least encouraging the right behavior.
Kim?
I agree. We need to hang on to all the parking we have. It's only going to get more needed as time goes on. And the two-hour limit is fine.
I agree with everybody. I think the two-hour limit should be imposed and we should enforce it. I think we should encourage the use of the garage for downtown, downtown employees and try and keep as much space available for restaurants and for the shops.
Do you need a motion?
No, we don't. We got consensus.
Yeah.
But do we, I have a question. Do we need to do something to convert that to two-hour?
Don't we have like consensus, or should we have a motion?
No, we'll need to come back with, I think, an amendment to our parking ordinance.
We may, we may need to come back.
Okay.
If we do, we'll come back with it.
Should we, should we make all of the, not the parking garage, but maybe, can we make all of the parking two-hour parking or limit like that?
You'd wish.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there instead of each individual.
Each piece meal, each area.
Because like, okay, well, over there it's two, and over there, we need like five ordinances to...
Yeah, because the same with the lot that you're, the Hector House Plaza lot. I mean, we've had the same trouble in there where people, you know, park there and they work in the historic courthouse, or they work, you know, in one of the buildings nearby, and they're, they're parked in there all day long. Nancy?
Okay, so the question, though, about that particular parking lot is it's across the street from the Charlotte Community Foundation, and if there's an event there...
This is just during the day, right?
Well, I'm talking, you know, if there's a meeting, let's say...
Oh, okay.
At the Charlotte Community Foundation, that's for an afternoon. So then that would preclude people parking in, and I realize it's a hard, they have a hard time finding parking because the Hector House parking lot does get filled up.
Well, that's because the people that work all day park there.
Right. So is two-hour the answer, or is it four-hour?
Maybe if they do...
I'm just thinking of the Charlotte Community Foundation and meetings.
If, I don't know how prompt will be, if it's two hours and 15 minutes, will we have somebody there to enforce, when do we go over that 15 minutes?
No, no. We have signage. That's what we have. We have signage.
And maybe if they have a meeting, I know they do this at the Beach Complex, they could have some type of sheet, you know, some type of thing you could put in your windshield, and that could be some type of waiver or something for that day, for that meeting.
I mean, I guess we could just do the seven spots two-hour. Gary?
I think from an enforcement standpoint, to enforce this 24/7 is obviously not going to be practical. What's going to happen, whether it's the seven spots or whether it's by Hector House, when you have somebody that is a habitual violator, it's going to come to the attention of police. A citation could be issued, and then that person's going to learn their lesson, and things will go on. And when you have an unusual situation like a meeting at the Hector House, that's not a habitual situation, and it's probably not going to be enforced. And I kind of like what Kim points out. It's kind of a, let's keep it simple and blanket out. I mean, you know, there's, there's, it's just like, if you're doing 35 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone, you're not going to be getting a ticket in this town. You know, there's the enforcement issue too. I don't know, maybe we could, but I don't see us...
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And I think if we did do that, we're still going to have the people that park there...
Sure.
For their workday, which is what we've tried to encourage them not to do by communicating with them. But it will, the people that do, want to do the right thing will...
Yeah.
And with the Community Foundation, I mean, two hours, it's fairly generous. I mean, I know we had this whole conversation the, two times ago when we discussed all this, but, you know, Sullivan, we would do all downtown parking?
Yeah, I think. Wow, we went from seven public parking spaces to all downtown.
But then what do you do, like on, I mean, I bring it up...
On Taylor.
Well, on Taylor or on Sullivan, where you have businesses there and they park there? Where are they supposed to go? Everybody go, if everybody went to the parking garage, then that would be awful.
Well, the SunLoft has parking.
You got to pay for it.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, it will come to that.
It will. Eventually it will.
And Kim pointed, if it comes to that, communities do have permit parking.
Right.
And so that, you know, if it, if it came to that, then we could probably address for the people, the people...
Legitimate people, yes.
Legitimate people, a window sticker or permit parking. I mean, they do this all over the world. They do this in England, they do this in Washington DC and whatever.
That's our idea.
They do it in Ridley, Ridleyville, if you're a neighbor.
Gainesville.
You know, it's hard for me to get a parking spot in Ridleyville, but if you're, you know, and then you move your car and you sell, that's the spot for the right game. But that's anyway. The point being is that's, I think that's, if it comes to that, then that's something that we could probably deal with fairly easily, but I think...
I think we should just do the seven spots for now.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll come back, we'll come back, we'll come back with an ordinance.
I was not, I've got to say this because it's going to come back to bite me if I don't. I was not aware that we have parking ordinances that we clearly don't enforce. Because at some point in time, we're going to decide to enforce it. And the person who gets that first citation is going to say, it's well-known, the newspapers say that we don't enforce. And that becomes problematic for us. And if we don't enforce parking in terms of time, but we do enforce handicap parking restrictions, somebody may make the argument that, well, it was well-known that we don't enforce parking, and so I wasn't going to be concerned about parking. Howard's telling me to shut up, but it's on the record now that I have concern that we need to pay attention.
The volunteers do, they do...
When you say we don't enforce parking, we don't have active 24-hour a day force. We enforce, we just did four-hour parking at Lashley Park, you know, when that...
Yep.
And we go by there.
So the correct statement is, we do enforce parking. We just have a limited staff to do so.
Yes.
That is correct.
And some people may...
Exactly.
That is correct.
And no one should assume that if we have a parking ordinance with a time limitation, that they're not going to be cited.
True.
Thank you.
That's why we have an attorney on the...
Yep.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yep.
That's better than the way I said it. I noticed our police chief didn't come into the room, but he, if we said something that was out of line, he would have come in already. So we do enforce. We don't enforce maybe like some other communities enforce, but it's out there.
It's out there. It's out there.
Okay. So what did we just, we'll come back.
We are doing the seven spots, and we were going to add that to the ordinance, the parking ordinance.
All right. Mikail probably already has it done. Okay.
Okay, next is future level of service for legal services.
I just talked to Howard about this. I thought it might be a good idea to look at the level of service for the legal services and what the needs of the city are and what they will be in the future. I know we have a part-time, on a full attorney right now, but I think sometimes we might need more than that. So I just wanted to have a discussion about it to see how you all felt about it. Because we'll probably be coming into, you know, I think April, I mean, is, I think David's contract is up, and so if you wanted to put out proposals to look at a different level of service, it would be time to start thinking about it now.
I don't think it's been done since I've been here, maybe right before I got on council, I believe, or before that even.
We discussed it, but we...
We did discuss it, but nothing was really done with it. But, I mean, to open it up for proposals, I don't have a problem with that, just to see. You know, we've gotten along with our, our situation as it is now for quite some time, but, you know, there have been times where, you know, issues, multiple issues come up at one time, and it does get a little bit difficult. So I would, I would be okay going out for proposals, kind of open-ended, full, part-time. I mean, you said in 2005, there was a whole full-blown process.
Around 2005, when we were notified by Rob Bernstein, who represented a firm, that he wasn't going to do it anymore. We did a proposal process back then. And council looked at a number of options and decided that a contract legal firm with a representative, David Levin, was the way to go. But we have consciously put limitations within our budget on the, how many hours we would like to see. It's a budget decision. I'm sure that if we put more hours and more dollars into the budget, we would see more service from the legal firm. But again, it's, but that was a budget level service call.
I mean, I'm even saying if you had someone, I mean, I looked at the monies that have been spent on legal fees, and even though David's fee is a lower hourly rate, you know, we're still paying, you know, an average of about $130,000, $140,000 a year. So if you had somebody, even if the full-time meant three days a week, I mean, and I guess it would be up to staff to say, what's your wish list for a legal service? What are we missing? What aren't we, what isn't happening in a timely fashion, that type of thing? So when you put it out, you really know what they're, they feel their needs are, how they would be better met. And if we're going to be doing more annexation and more, more things that are happening in the city, I think that you probably would get more, if you had someone full-time, you probably would get, or even if that wasn't 40 hours a week, but more of a full-time type of situation.
Nancy?
I guess I'm looking at this from a demand perspective and whether or not we need it. And, and if we were to hire someone and put them on the payroll, then we're talking about, we've made a commitment to that, hold that person to a position. And if they're a multitasker, or they have other, other abilities, I was talking with Howard, like that they had financial background, they could, you know, do more things, but it, you know, adding someone to the staff that has a limited skill set, very focused, you know, I don't know that we've got the demand for it at this point in time.
Well, that's what this is about.
Yeah, so I'm looking at this and I'm saying, yeah, but, you know, it's, and if we're going to hire an attorney to put them on, we're going to pay considerable for it, so.
Gary?
The, the little bit that I'm aware of, the, the skill sets and levels of lawyers is very, appears to me very similar to whether you're in engineering consulting or in medicine and so forth, that there are specialties within specialties. If we commit to one individual, then we've limited the specialty that we have. If we use a firm, even though we may be predominantly dealing with somebody such as, as David predominantly, he still has the ability to pull from the expertise of other individuals and other viewpoints within that firm. So I'm more inclined to say that I would like to see us, whatever commitment we make, to be some way in a contractual relationship to a firm that has more than one gray matter sitting between its shoulders.
Tom?
I would agree with Gary on that. I don't think that we have a need to go for a full-time in-house attorney for the reasons that Gary stated, in terms of expertise and so on. We need to keep in mind that a big chunk of legal fees over the past couple of years were related to the mining issue, which we had a lawsuit with the county over. I, I'm happy, I think that if, if we identify legal needs, we, I think that we should identify legal needs, and if David's firm needs to be more involved than they are, we should identify those locations and put them in the budget.
They're very involved. I mean, they handle, what's the lawsuit we're in, Desert?
Micro Desert.
Micro Desert something. Yeah, so they're very involved in that aspect. Nancy?
I'd also like to just acknowledge that Mikail provides a tremendous amount of legal services, and she is on our payroll, so we're blessed to have her as Howard's assistant and able to provide a multitude of skills that she brings to the table. So thank you, Mikail.
Yes.
So that is, you know, if we did not have a Mikail and did not have that paralegal capability, we might need to depend on the legal firm more than what we do.
That's true. We're very blessed here to have somebody who can do both paralegal and administrative work for the city manager at the same time, and council.
Yes.
Yes.
Just three things. That's not, that's unusual.
When the council members are done, I would like to say something.
Okay.
Does everybody begin?
Done.
All right. When I first started as a city attorney, I had a full-time paralegal who was very knowledgeable about city matters because she's been here for a long time. But most of the routine legal work was done by me or others in my firm. And so there was a lot of legal services generated that cost much more than what a paralegal would do. And so when Mikail became available to us, in order to keep the legal fees low, I gave Mikail as much as she could handle. If I thought that that was going to negatively reflect on the level of service that I was providing, I would have done the work myself, and you would have seen a much higher annual bill. I have done my best to keep the legal costs low, particularly during the times of economic hardship. I have a very large firm with a huge range of services that could be provided. The city could not possibly match the expertise in-house that I could provide. So I'm not real sure whether what I'm hearing is that the level, that the skill set that is being provided is being questioned, or that there's work that's not being done, or not being done as timely as you would like. And the reason that you might have that understanding or impression is because for a number of years now, between staff and administration, we have tried to meter out the work on a priority basis so that the fees that the cities, citizens have to pay are kept to a minimum. I assure you that if you gave me the go-ahead, I can put any number of attorneys in my office to work on stuff and crank out work seven days a week. And I don't think, I didn't think that's what you wanted. So I'm hoping that, that I get clear instruction as to what your expectations are from my firm. Because if it's a matter of timeliness, that is easy to address. If it's a matter of cost, I think if you look at what the city is paying now compared to what it paid in, you know, in between 2008 and 2012, it's substantially reduced. And a lot of that is because I've given Mikail a lot of stuff that she could handle. And if Mikail ever left, I think the recommendation would be that the city hire another equally competent paralegal. If it's the quality of the service, that's something totally different, and I wouldn't want you to retain me as your city attorney if you are unhappy with the quality of the service.
Kim?
I guess what I'm, what I would like to see is if we, if Howard could get a consensus of exactly what David's talking about, and talk with the staff that interacts with David and, and his firm, and find out, is there more they need, is there less they need, are their needs being met, is all I'm asking. I mean, we, he works for us, just so, and we have no idea. So that's all I'm saying, is that I think that it would be nice to know with the people that work with David, is, is that what they need? Would they like to see more? And then get a report back.
I can tell you right now that if you ask staff, including me, then in order to get things accomplished quicker, we're going to need to put more dollars in the budget for the firm.
Gary?
It seems to me that there may, because of previous hardships, that there may have been a onus put on the legal firm that hasn't been loosened, and maybe it should be, and that what we should, as a, as a consul, be encouraging both David's and his firm and our city to open up that dialogue and not be so shy. In other words, if they, if David thinks we should be spending a little bit more money, then it should be on David to say, I want you to consider spending a little bit more money with us. Don't be shy about it. And conversely, and so forth. We are so blessed to have Mikail. She's, I won't tell you how many times that she's done something very special for me, and I'm sure I'm not alone. So it seems to me is, is that somewhere along the line was, oh, we got to really tighten the screens, and then...
For years. That went on for years.
Okay, the cold is over. We're already out of the doctor's office. It's okay if we go for a long walk. And that there should be a reaffirmant, affirmation, that there should be this two-way dialogue between us and our service, our legal services.
And that's the reason for the, you know, proposal or the whatever, to say, this is the level of service we want. What's it going to cost us?
Tom?
Well, as Kim, as you said just earlier, I think that staff should identify the level of service that it feels it needs...
That would be helpful.
And is not being dealt with at this point in time. And then we could have additional discussion, and we could add some money to the budget if that's what is required. We need to have an understanding if certain things aren't being done as fast as we, you should expect. What are they, and what do we need to fix it?
I think that, that would be an initial direction to go, for sure.
Well, that would help me as well, because I'm not aware of any complaints about the work not getting done as quickly as they need.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that all you need?
Okay, we'll get, we'll get it to you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Recommendation from city officers. Howard?
501, last budget public hearing tonight.
Yay, 501.
That's it.
We were going to rope Jane and Franken to be in here. We had them convinced they had to come back. City attorney?
Nothing further. Thank you.
City clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, starting with announcement of vacant seats, we have a three-year term on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee, as well as a three-year term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. And then under appointments, we have an unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have two eligible applicants. Voting forms are being distributed, voting for one.
Mm-hmm.
And the appointee is Mr. Court.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Policy and legislation, I have two things. Did Don McCormick leave? I guess Don left. Don came up to me at the beginning of the meeting and just alerted me to the fact that Mike Moran, who is our district, is it a district? Our region, our areas representative on the SWIFTMUD Board, is running for county commissioner. And if he wins that, then he will have to resign his seat on the SWIFTMUD Board. So there's possibly going to be a SWIFTMUD governing board opening for this area. So I know we've had interested, how did we handle that before? Did we...
We coun...
We, council recommended a name.
Okay, so we'll probably be, I don't know if Mike, Mr. Moran is, what his plans are as far as the board seat, but we could have that in the process. If he does resign his seat, be ready to recommend a name on our behalf to the governor. So, just putting that out there.
Do we want to, I think the last time we might have even advertised in the weekly report if anybody was interested, submit.
I think we should probably wait till they announce the vacancy, though. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it is a gubernatorial appointee, so-
Yes, and it goes to the governor.
We would need to make sure that we let the appropriate authorities know.
Yes, and historically, they do choose somebody from the north end of the area, so-
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Typically, Sarasota.
We want our turn. We'll put that in the letter. Okay, I think we worked out today by setting the special exception for 1:00 p.m. on November 2nd. I think we'll be okay to hold that meeting here in the chambers. Seeing the crowd we had this morning, it was manageable. The other meeting would be the Akia Stad development. From the numbers that showed up at the-
PGI Civic-
The PGI Civic Association was even hard-pressed to accommodate everybody who wanted to attend that meeting. So what are you saying, second meeting in November?
Right now, we are advertising it for the Planning Commission on the 24th of October and council on November 16th, which will be the first meeting of the new council.
So, seeing that they're going to be a hot topic, would we like to move, Kim's trying to move everything to November 16th now. She's just voting to take everything, November 16th. Should we look into the event center? Or what is your pleasure?
Are you talking about the-
Don't throw us under the bus, Tom.
The Planning Commission?
No, our council meeting.
You're going to get a big turnout at the Planning Commission as well, why would they?
I would think so, too.
You may want to-
And we weren't prepared at the last hearing with the audio and the video out there, so we definitely need to-
Well, because we don't video-
Well, we need to be prepared so the people out in the hallway can hear and see what's going on in the room.
If we leave it here.
If we leave it here, yes.
Can I say something?
Hold on, we're in the discussion.
I understand, but it's part of that discussion.
Okay, okay. Any thoughts or feelings?
I mean, if I were you, I would have it at the civic, at the event center.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. I think that we need to accommodate as many people as we think want to come, might be there, and if we knowingly, you know, can hold it here when we expect a throng, then I think that we're not doing the right, we're not serving our community, isn't it?
I just think, you know, sometimes we, we can't move every controversial topic to the event center, because it's very costly, but in this case, we already, we've already seen the numbers of people that showed up to the initial meeting, and so, yes, come to the podium, state your name and-
Bill Schindler. I was outside. There were people driving around the blocks. They were trying to get through the driveway. You only saw half of what was out there trying to get in here. So move, if you expect to have public input, you can't get them into this place.
Thank you. What about the Planning Commission?
Well, Planning Commission, I mean, it would, you're probably going to get a big crowd there, although they recommend, you're the final say. Do you want to try for the event center as well, for the Planning Commission? I mean, I, we can try.
Or even the Civic Association.
Yeah, maybe that one could go to the Civic Association.
Well, I'd rather use the event center, because they already have the sound system.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, I would offer that to the Planning Commission, that if they wish to hold their meeting, that they could-
They meet again October, right? Why don't, yeah, bring it to the, that's a good idea. Bring it to the Planning Commission. Because we could certainly do some things like we did today with the cards, the speaker cards, and make sure we have the audio and video, if they want to keep it here in this venue, we could make sure we have the audio and video available for the people outside. But, yeah, bounce it back to them.
Audio and video available to people outside?
In the, in the hallway. In the, in the foyer.
Okay, but you're talking about if the meeting is here?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have the TV outside and we do have the speakers outside, so what, I'm not sure what-
It wasn't working.
The, the video wasn't on.
No, the video, and the TV wasn't on when Vivante-
The Vivante.
Hearing during the Planning Commission.
Or during planning.
During planning, yeah.
During planning.
I see, yeah.
If the Planning Commission wa-
Because we don't use the videos, so-
Right, we would have to put that in order, if that's what they would like.
That's if they want to do it here, otherwise-
That's if they want to do it here. So, does the city council want us to look for a November 16th at the event center?
Yes.
Me, too.
I think so.
As part of the council meeting?
Or, you mean, just that hearing itself?
Yeah. Like you're doing Vivante.
Have it in the afternoon at 1:00, I think.
Yeah, we could do that.
I think that would be more manageable.
I think that would be manageable.
I think, you're saying, basically do the rest of our business in here the way we normally would.
In the morning.
And have that as a special-
Yeah, because we have this hearing in and, I mean, that-
Can we do that?
It's still part of the city council meeting, it's just you take a recess to the afternoon for a particular purposes, but it is part of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's legally doable, I would say, let's just do that portion of it.
I would say that would be ideal.
I would, I would agree with that.
That would be ideal.
1:00 event center, we'll see if we can get it.
Okay.
If we can't get it, if it's already occupied, the Civic Association is a lot bigger than here, even though when I was there, the last time Akia Stad was brought out, it was jam-packed.
Well, at least we're doing our best to accommodate a larger audience.
And we can, we can do some management. We can do the cards and make sure everybody is heard and have it managed a little better.
Or you can continue it to a different date, when it is available, on a Thursday. Yeah, or any type of hearing that you have.
We can advert, you know, we've got it when it's going to be advertised, just-
Yeah, we have, we have time. How about the first meeting in October? We'll know, we'll know what our venue is going to be.
Oh, we'll know tomorrow.
Okay. Then we have both meetings in October, the first meeting in November, to let everybody know. So that's plenty of time.
I think so.
So Vivante, we're still going to have here on November 2nd, am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that was my policy and legislation. I don't think I have anything else. Council member comments. Kim?
No, thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, citizens' comments on any subject, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Steve Fabian. I want to comment about the city website. One objective was definitely made. It is beautiful. Is it user-friendly? No, it is not. I, I consider myself as being computer literate, and I find it very cumbersome, maneuvering through that new website. If you look at the old one, it was very simple, very easy. This one is so confusing, believe me, somebody's got to look, it is not user-friendly.
Thank you.
Guess who, Ray Rose. I kind of agree with Steve, too, on that one, before I said my other. Couple of weeks ago, you approved a mural to go into the Fire Stick Action, two fire murals. Well, I got some news for you folks. Last night, out at PGICA, which has partnered with the Mural Society and the Green Thumbs, we had a party of 350 people, and we had picked up another partner, and that was called the Punta Gorda Fire Department, who came out and had barbecue. We had a big free party for everybody, and as a result, half the money for the mural was raised yesterday. The Green Thumbs have raised over $20,000. This is part of the giving challenge. We took up some nice cash, too, along the way. And I got to tell you, that got me, I was trying to think what to say about that. First of all, thanks to Ray Briggs and his crew. Folks, those guys and gals who are out there, they care about the citizens, and that's the theme that goes across the city. I got to think about some things. Tom Lewis came out to the PGI board meeting last week, and we talked about the bikes and other actions in the citizen. Tom was there to talk to us about annexation and other issues, and he brought coleslaw last night for the big party. We had, I had called Terry, because we're kind of moved for space at PGICA, and I wanted to be sure what direction we were going was the right way. Well, Terry had the staff there, we needed some information from building, they came up, they had the plans, and in an hour, we knew what capabilities we had, and they gave us a lot of suggestions that went beyond anything that we thought of, and how to do it practically and smartly. I've been sitting out in this audience now for about 12 years. I have listened sometimes. This city has evolved. The whole attitude of the city has evolved. We've got a lot of challenges coming up. We've got a winning team, and I think that one of the things that this council, actually the next council that's coming up, has to start thinking about how we are going to maintain the leadership team that runs this city today, and I'm not talking about this guy, except for one up there, and his staff and the team that he has built. And when drop comes, we cannot afford to lose that team, and we've got to work on the solution now to make sure that it occurs. And I'd like to thank the city and continue to see the progress come along.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Any other citizens' comments? I just want to remind everybody that Friday morning at 9:00, somebody correct me if I'm wrong?
9:00.
9:00 a.m. at-
Spirit of Punta Gorda.
Spirit of Punta Gorda, the sculpture, we're going to have the unveiling of the interpretive signage that's going along the Harbor Walk, 9:00 a.m. Friday morning. So if you'd like to come out and see that, we'd love to see you there. And seeing nobody else, we are adjourned.